Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of Tuesday, May 8. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All council members are here except the mayor, who will be late, and also council member Olson, who will also be a few minutes late. So I'll begin with the proclamation recognizing small businesses in the city of Bothell. Should I go up to the podium or do it from here?
Yes.
How do I turn this? Oh, it's on. Okay. Whereas small businesses are at the heart of our nation employing nearly 58 million Americans, and whereas from storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy. And whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture, and whereas because this country's 30 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. Whereas April 29 through May 5, 2018, was National Small Business Week, and whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies, now therefore I, Davina Duer, Deputy Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby recognize the city of Bothell's small businesses for creating jobs and ensuring that our community remains as vibrant tomorrow as it is today. Paul?
Yeah.
So Paul Kavanaugh owns Woodlawn Optical on Main Street, and he's here to accept the proclamation. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, briefly. Wow. Thank you for selecting me to receive this on behalf of all the small businesses in Bothell. I've been down here now 25 years, love the community, being a part of the community is a very special thing. I often say that I have this book work to do and lab work to do, which I, you know, like the lab work, the book work a little less, but then I get interrupted by my friends all day long. And I think each of us, when the small businesses are supported, it's a vibrant community, and I'm very pleased to be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And if I may, say a few words, because I believe that our small businesses in Bothell are our economic engine as well as the heart of our community. So thank you very much, Paul, for your leadership.
We are now at the visitor comment portion of the meeting. Do we have any people signed up? So moving on, we're at New Business, AB 18072, Partnering Agreement Between Sound Transit and the City of Bothell for the Bus Rapid Transit Program. And Aaron Lenhart, the Director of Public Works, will present.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. Just a very brief presentation from me, what you have before you this evening to, that we would like action upon, is one of multiple agreements that will come before you as part of the Sound Transit III Bus Rapid Transit projects. Sound Transit started with the city of Bothell since the two bus rapid transit routes they will be constructing actually meet within our borders. And the agreement before you really kind of sets the ground rules. It establishes processes about, by which we will move forward with Sound Transit, between Sound Transit and the city. It speaks to permitting processes since there will be improvements in the right-of-way for the 522 bus rapid transit. And Sound Transit is currently contemplating constructing their operations facility within the city of Bothell. And they will also be constructing a parking garage, a 300-space parking garage, somewhere along the route. So this agreement is scheduled for consideration by the Sound Transit Board's Capital Committee this Thursday, May 10. And essentially, some of the top items that this covers right now is that it agrees, Sound Transit has agreed that they, the city, will manage the project to construct the 522 Stage 3 improvements. You may recall that the city received federal funding to design that project. It's west of the Wayne Curve improvements. It's essentially from the Kenmore city limits and Bothell city limits to Wayne Curve. So they have agreed that they will fund that, and the city will manage that construction project. We have to have a separate funding agreement that will come before you at a later date specific to how that's going to be funded. It also speaks to, the city is very interested in constructing other aspects of the right-of-way improvements that are associated with this project. We've been doing these projects along 522 in particular, and then our local streets for quite some time. So Sound Transit, this is their first foray into bus rapid transit, and so their experience isn't in road right-of-way like the city's is. So we continue to advocate for city project management of the other improvements. So this agreement speaks to when that will be considered and how. And we will, as I mentioned, we will continue to advocate for that in order to meet the 2024 service delivery date that Sound Transit has committed to in Sound Transit III. It also commits us to work on a permitting plan. So this is how we can both ensure that we don't stand in the other's way in order to meet that 2024 service delivery date. If you have any questions, I am here. The Executive's Office, the Legal Department, Community Development, and Public Works, we all worked with Sound Transit to develop this agreement. We are the first out the gate since so many of the projects are within our borders. So the other jurisdictions in the alignment will also be adopting partnering agreements with Sound Transit.
Who has questions? No one? Okay, I have questions. So when I attended the executive leadership group meeting, there was some discussion about partnership agreements. And I guess they had talked about bringing some examples to the group for future, I guess, consideration. Are we going to be having a series of partnering agreements, or is this the only round?
This is the only partnering agreement. They probably will have somewhat different flavor for the different agencies since they don't have as many aspects of the BRT projects associated with them. Kathy Leota from Sound Transit is also here to help answer questions.
Hi. Yeah, I just, it was curious to me when I, when we received the packet, because they had talked about it as in the future, we're going to be bringing you at this meeting, these examples. And so, obviously, it seemed out of sequence. I think the other question I had was, do we know, and I asked, I actually asked the city manager earlier, but can we invite Sound Transit to come talk to us about the bus maintenance facility? Because in the meeting, they discussed the Canyon Park location as though it was kind of more certain than, than I guess I had thought it was. And so I'd like to know how certain they really are. And I don't know if you want to answer that question, Kathy?
We have a.
The mic is on up at the dais or podium.
Yes, so as you know, that site was, our board approved a potential acquisition of that property because it was on the market at the time. And so we are, in order to preserve that as an option for bus operations and maintenance facility. However, we have not been through the environmental analysis, environmental review of that site, so it would not be a sure thing, a definite thing, until we went through that process. My understanding is that we are in discussions with the property owner at this time, but I don't know anything more than that.
Can I ask, going forward, how tightly will you be in communications with Bothell in terms of, as certainty becomes, I guess, more?
I think we will be in close coordination. It's, Steve is who I work with for the 522 BRT project for the Bothell operations base, I believe. It's Eddie Lowe, I think, is our representative. It's more associated with the 405 BRT project. So we have fairly regular, open coordination communication, so I don't, shouldn't be any surprises.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And so your timeline on this is what? Could you kind of lay that out for me?
For the, for the partnering agreement?
For completion of the partnering agreement.
So we are, would like to be able to bring this partnering agreement to our Board of Directors this month. Initially, we were planning to bring him to our Capital Committee in two days. That meeting was canceled, so it's just going to go directly to the Board of Directors two weeks from two days.
And this is, is this dependent upon, like, your car fees, your licensing fees?
The, the projects included in this, those, our revenue sources do include those funding sources, and the projects do partially depend on all of the revenue sources. So I, to some degree, yes.
And when you say revenue sources, could you just kind of name a few, so I?
It would be the motor vehicle excise tax, property, property tax, and sales tax for the primary.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. So, sorry, I'll keep you back up one more second. So is the, are all the projects along the 522 quarter, the ones that we're talking about today for this agreement, are those already, has the funding been established for those?
We have a, we have a project budget, so that, that hasn't changed.
Okay.
No changes since the, the measure was passed by the voters in 2016.
Okay, so all the projects that we're kind of talking about, the, you know, the parking, parking rides, and the bus rapid lanes and all that stuff, that's all pretty much figured in? Okay, perfect. So I guess I wanted to talk about the different, it seems like there's three different groups working on this right now.
Yes.
There is the 522 local electeds, or elected officials, there's the I-405 officials, and then there's also the city management, city managers, working on this as well?
So I know that's a little bit confusing. So for the 522 BRT project, we have three organized groups that are helping to guide the project. The interagency, interagency group, which Steve is a member of that group, the city managers group, which was kind of a unique throughout the region. No, I'm, I don't, I'm not aware of any other Sound Transit projects having a city managers, kind of organized, a city managers group, so sort of a self-organized group. And Jennifer is on that group. And then we have the elected leadership group for the 522 project, which you're a part of, that group. So for the 405 BRT project, that has a separate elected leadership group and a separate interagency coordination group. And the 405 BRT project includes the bus operations and maintenance facility project within it.
Great, fabulous. So it sounds like, and when you refer to Steve, you're referring to Steve?
Morikawa, right.
Okay, with the city of Bothell.
Yes.
Okay. So it sounds like we were pretty much at each one of the, within each one of these groups?
Yes.
That we need to be within? Okay, fabulous. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to mention, I think we're doing a great service to this project getting ahead of schedule because we were talking about at our very first meeting of the 405 BRT group, things that cities could do to ensure the project, the project keeps moving and gets completed on time. And we just started talking about partnering agreements, and here we are signing one. So I think that bodes well for Bothell. I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry. I'd like to move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember McNeil and seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Recommended action is to authorize the city manager to enter into a partnering agreement with the Central Puget Sound Transit Authority, AKA Sound Transit, in substantially the same form as presented. Are you ready for our votes?
This will have to be a show of hands?
Oh, okay. On favor, please raise your hand. Aye. Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Olson and Mayor Raym excused. Okay. Moving on to our study session, AB 18073, the public safety update. Who will be presenting? Okay. Assistant City Manager Torey Barzitas will present. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for a great conversation in April. This is the part two of an ongoing conversation this spring about public safety, but as you know, this has been under discussion for quite some time prior to that, both the public safety services that we offer and also the strains that those services are facing on resources. So again, my appreciation for very fruitful discussion in April. What you'll see tonight is a result of hearing your feedback and making some alterations and continuing that discussion so that you can see some alternatives as you've requested. So wanted to go over a little bit of the agenda for the evening. Okay. So I will start by giving a little bit of an update on public engagement and what we've heard so far through a variety of channels. This is what Chris from Cocker Fantasy did last time. Chris isn't here tonight, so I've got her information. So we've been at your direction, listening very actively to the residents and community members in Bothell to tell us how they're feeling about public safety, how they're feeling about public spending, and all those sort of things, so that you have all the best information that you can for this. Next, we'll be talking about different alternatives for fire facilities. So your direction at the last meeting, we heard you that you were looking for some options on how we might be able to improve the fire facilities that we have. So we've got some options on that, and I really want to thank Chief Crone and his team for doing some great work on very quick turnaround to try to figure out how we can be effective in improving these workplaces for our employees. We're then going to talk a little bit more about operational needs. We heard you in terms of priorities that you had expressed during that discussion, or items that were of interest. So there are some alterations to the operational package that I will be happy to explain when we get to that piece. As I said, that was sort of draft one, was what came to you in April. It was staff's first cut at it. Draft two is that with your feedback incorporated. And then we would, the primary goal out of this evening is to continue that discussion and to learn more from you about your priorities and the community's priorities in public safety, so that we can bring that back to you, so it's as precisely fitting what you're looking for as possible. And then finally, the next steps in discussion is just more learning your feedback. I've got these four items because items two and three have a lot to them. So you'll notice as we go through, I've labeled item one of four, two of four, three of four, just so that it'll be a lot, but we'll just get through that. Any questions before we start? I think that was it. The rest of it I'll cover once we get to operational options. Okay, so from Cocker Fantasy, our consultants on research, communication, and public engagement, they have been listening in a variety of ways since we brought them on in March, and helping us listen and design our public engagement to be as inclusive and active as possible. So you can see here, a lot of April 17, prior to that, was the stakeholder interviews that they presented then. April through May is active community listening through a lot of existing channels, really directing folks, and any of the watching audiences also welcome to go to bothelllaw.gov-publicsafety. We've recently updated the online survey there, so we're getting a lot of information through that, through the web forum whose comments I've sent to you previously. I'll be sending you another batch tomorrow. And then all of our usual city communications channels are on full listening mode about public safety right now. So we are asking everybody we can find. And then if the council were to decide to put something toward the ballot in November, that decision would have to be made sometime in June. So we're doing everything in the listening so that you can have all the best information that you need by June. So this is, again, the variety of channels that we've been listening right now to hear the, to solicit, actively solicit feedback from the community on public safety. We recently have sent out an email to community partners, asking them to send it to their mailing list, to direct them to our website and the survey for it. So we're really trying to be very creative to reach as many people as possible to ask for their feedback. So some of the feedback we've heard previously, this is incorporating both the stakeholder feedback, and then what we're hearing through the web forums, through social media, through the online survey. We are trying to be as inclusive and open as possible, so we're not just directing people to one way to tell us information, we want to hear it through all channels. I will be getting you this presentation tomorrow as well. So I heard you in the last meeting that you wanted to have the information to digest it. Since tonight is sort of the, the second of two parts about your priorities, I have a schedule for delivering a lot of information to you shortly after this meeting. So you'll get this in writing, you'll be able to review it. But these are some of the things that we'd heard. Lot of concern about petty crime, very positive feelings toward our public safety employees and the services they're providing. As you may recall, Chris said, they're, sort of, the feelings are so positive toward our public safety departments that she said people actually called our public safety responders beloved, which I think is, is really nice and speaks to the quality of Bothell. So, you know, interest in up-to-date equipment, recognition that resources might be stretching thin. I said, I'll, I'll make sure that you have this tomorrow, so you'll be able to review it then, but this is just some overview. And then I've got four slides on themes that we're hearing, so generally satisfied with current levels of public safety services, so people are pretty happy with what they're seeing right now from our public safety departments. These are some representative comments. As we touched upon in the last meeting, several folks explained they are not familiar with municipal court services as much. So that was one theme we continued to see. A lot of positive improvements have been noticed, including pedestrian safety improvements, so way to go, Public Works. And that is likely related to our safe streets and sidewalks as well. So they, they feel positive about it, seeing a lot of good progress. So again, like we saw last time, continues to be in alignment. What we're hearing more recently, that a lot of the most pressing public safety needs seem to be around traffic, crime prevention, theft, and drugs. So you'll hear more from Chief Cummings as we get into the operational piece of this about those, but that continues to be in alignment with what we heard previously. And then because this may, if council made that decision, this could result in a potential ballot measure. So we've begun to receive some questions and comments about that. So I'll, I'll pause here for a minute, so you can skim, but I will get this to you tomorrow, so you will have all this in writing. These are simply selected comments that we've heard from people. Yeah.
So the comment, Bothell's been spending a ton of money to improve downtown. I hope there's money left over to hire more officers. I think a lot of people don't understand the difference between funds and pots of money.
Yeah.
It would be nice to maybe at some point have a discussion about that, because I, I get that all the time, like, how can you buy a Wayne Golf Course, but you can't pay for police?
Yep.
And I think people don't understand that there are designated funds, they're not all interchangeable, so.
That's a great point, thank you. And I'd forgotten to mention, in the schedule of upcoming information, the city manager and I had asked Finance Director Tammy Shackman to come back on June 5 and present on the city finances generally. So things like we discussed last time, the questions about, you know, why doesn't growth pay for the services that it requires? She'll be addressing that and other revenue options in that presentation. So we'll have that in a lot more depth.
That would be great, because I see all the time on Facebook that we're greedy and we want the growth because it gets us more money. And that's just a common misperception, I think.
Yep.
Anybody else have questions? We're good?
Okay. Great. So that's just a quick update on what we're continuing to hear. You will receive a full summary report of the public comments as we, we're concluding that window, May 25. So we'll be compiling it and presenting that to you in early June, so that you've got the summary. Obviously, we're continuing to encourage residents to reach out to you directly, so I'm sure you've heard feedback that way as well. Yeah, I think that's it. So for, what I will be getting you immediately after this, or tomorrow, is the PowerPoint from tonight, the documentation behind Fire Capital Options. And then I've got some documents for operations you'll see later. So if you see something and say, I wish I had a copy of this, you're about to get it. So tonight is just your priorities and just discussion. Yeah.
So I have a question. So when I'm looking at these respondents' comments, are they connected to the fact that it would mean we would put a levy out that would, would possibly increase their property taxes? I mean, are they aware of that?
I can't speak directly. I can, I can say that when, whenever there's been a question about potential ballot measure, that's usually at the end of our web forum or surveys. So it will ask, you know, what, what are you looking for in these different areas? As we talked about last time, a lot of what we're doing here is a needs assessment. So what are the needs in public safety? What are your priorities? When we do ask about it, it does come in the form of, is this something that, you know, this could result, do you have feelings on a potential ballot measure or something like that? So it's usually worded pretty generally, but they understand that's the reason why cities would ask that sort of question.
Okay. Because I don't see in the responses anything that says, you know, I would be concerned about, you know, my increase in property taxes. I think we still have a need, but, I don't see anything. Have you heard much of that kind of interaction between, okay, so we know we need, have a need for public safety, but would I support an increase in property taxes?
I mean, I think the first, the first comment there is an example of the kind of feedback that we would receive. So we're, we're asking really generally about the nature of public safety services that they're looking for, and what they're looking for from us. And then the, the team that I've been working with, our job is then to bring that back to you all with the feedback to integrate that in. So we have heard things of the nature of the first one. And we've heard on the other side, too, if you look a little further down, the second to last one, is that this is something they would prioritize. So it's a range of feedback.
Councilmember Zorn?
A quick question on the, one of the, your bullet points, please look at all resources for increasing public safety. One of other cities our size has done to get the same results. And I will confess, in the last few elections, when the ticker's running on how other, you know, municipalities in western Washington have been voting on things, I've been kind of sort of paying attention. Do we know of any, I don't know if we call them satellite cities, but cities around the greater Seattle, Tacoma, Everett area that are sort of comparable to Bothell, who've gone through a public safety recently, where we can compare how that was received and what, what specifically their needs were that they were addressing, and then how the public reacted to that? It's, it's really hard to do a one-on-one comparison.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of nice to know. I would think our area is probably the most likely to have a good match on comparing trends that are going on versus looking at the East Coast or south of us, so. I don't, do you know of any cities?
I've seen some comparable ones recently, so I know, I, I don't know if they're directly comparable, that is always the challenge, is to who's, who's our direct comparison. So I'd seen some in the area recently. I know Kent had one recently on a utility tax. Duval was trying to pass a capital bond for fire stations.
Okay.
So there were some. We did some initial research in starting this and had MRSC do some background research on levies and bonds by topic, and what kind of success rates they saw there. Every city is different. Generally, criminal justice or public safety measures were about half of the time successful.
Okay.
EMS had a higher success rate, but a lot of those were annexations, I think, or levies. So the, and that, I remember, I can, I can send that to you as well. So it was basically by topic, but it was 2014 to 2017. And generally, what we've been advised is that 2017 is a very different animal because we have ST3 and MacLeary, and so this is all happening after MacLeary.
Right.
So that, that is the, the question. So, that, that is the, the question, but we have some history from 14 through 17.
Okay. But, you're right, 2017 is going to be a little bit more germane to us figuring out what we want to do.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Chief Cummings?
Yes, I did recently read, just a few months ago, that Olympia, City of Olympia, had a public safety levy that did pass. So, yes, it did, so.
Councilmember McNeil?
The, on the comment spreadsheet that you sent to us, is there a, because I noticed in one of the, the columns, there's nothing in there. And then, I go to the next column, and it, and it reads about the same, and I was just curious. It says, "What do you think about current level of public safety services, fire slash EMS, comma, police, comma, courts?" There's, there's nothing in that column, but then I go to the next one, and there's some pretty robust stuff in there. It says, "What, what else would you like us to know about public safety services?" So, I'm curious, when I look at, when I look at the list up here, the, the comments, when they say officers, are they referring to only police officers? Are they referring to firefighters too? Or how, how are, I'm trying to figure out, how do we decipher between, are they talking about police officers or firefighters?
Generally, the terminology would be officers for police and firefighters for fire. If we're referring to both at the same time, we refer to sworn personnel.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Great. So, that's just the update as to what we've heard recently. We'll continue to update you and then present that summary report at the end of May, so that you've got everything that we've heard in addition to what you've heard. So, I'll hand this over to Chief Crone now, but this is, this next section is to talk about options for fire facilities. So, we brought back last time that there are needs in the area of public safety capital. You'd seen the rather large price tag on those and asked for some options. And so, it's again, my sincere thanks to Chief Crone and his team for finding some effective options.
All right. Is that going? Make one apology for breaking the golden rule of PowerPoint and having too much stuff on one slide. And of course, my screen just died. One second. Because that was the other rule, I'm trying not to look at the screen and look at you. This is awesome. Okay. Now, how's somebody on there? I'm back. Okay. So, we did a facility study, and initially, we're looking at getting facilities that are going to be new facilities that are built to, you know, modern standards. Our facilities are built at a different time, trying to get low maintenance, energy efficient, and, and, and facilities that will sustain growth and lead us into the future. It's something that's going to be around for 20, 30-plus years. So, keep us, get us in that next stage. That's kind of what we're shooting for, going into this whole thing, either, you know, a brand-new station or remodels. We want something that's going to last as long as we can. Some of the things we're looking at, that's, that's come along since the stations were built, or they've just gone out of compliance, energy use right now. We had a, some contractors come through and evaluate the stations for different things, structural stability, energy and whatnot. So, lighting, gender neutrality, one of our stations has open bays still, improved decontamination, we're washing clothes out in the, in the bay, cross-contamination, that's kind of a big one now, it's just, it's been recently coming around by dragging things through the station, and we're trying to eliminate that as much as we can. We want to have durable and low maintenance, right? So, going to a lot of hard surfaces anymore, so you can clean them, and they, they last a long time. Running out of equipment storage, our PPE, for example, the, the gear we wear for fires, it turns out that sunlight's not real good for it. So, long exposure to sunlight in the bay where we keep them is not good for them, for, for their, so we're starting to keep those in, in separate areas, contained, given out the sunlight. Safety standards have just changed, right? When the stations were built, they're, they're pretty much up to safety standards then, but they've just, they've evolved. And then, security, and we really have very poor security at all our stations right now. So, just to kind of recap, and on the 17th, we came by with the initial sticker shock of what it would cost to rebuild all three stations and build a fourth station. And that totaled 73.5 million, understands a lot of money. And you asked to come back with options, so we've come back with the three options. One of them is not to build the, the fourth station. And if you see Station 44, frankly, that station is, is past the point of doing any kind of meaningful remodel. It, if there's anything you're going to, we're going to do to it, we're going to have to tear it down and build it again. It just cannot be remodeled. But, I don't want to get too far into it, but that station is probably the last station we would want to increase staffing in, and so it's built out to where it's probably going to be for a while, so we could live with that if we had to. I will say, before I get too far into it, I am, I, I really, as a fire chief, want to be a strong advocate for the fire department, and I really want to push for, for, for new stations and get our people in good facilities. However, as a department director, I'm mindful of that in the city and the city manager, and I want to, obviously, the council makes the decision, but I, you know, I want to try to do both, but I don't want to get too far in the, in the firefighter thing. So, I'm trying to be mindful of that, but I, I'm really, would love to see new stations, obviously. But, your, your direction was to find other options, so we, we've tried to go and do that. So, just to kind of go over the, the remodel options, we looked at. Station 42, which is the headquarters station just down the road here, it's a large station that was, the part that says demo and rebuild on there, that was actually the original fire station with the bay. And then, in 96, early 90s, they extended it off to the east there with the other addition, which is now the crew quarters. They moved over there, and the, the administration building is just administration, and there's a training room. But, it was not built for administration, it was built for crew quarters. It's been remodeled several times, they've tried to do things to it. And when we're looking at plans to try to do something, to try to do a remodel, somebody, that was Jeff in, in Community Development, actually came up with a great idea, is, is actually demo and rebuild the admin portion, the, the worst, the oldest part, the one that's really hard to, to get into and do anything with, and then remodel, extensive remodel the bay eastward. So, we'd remodel the bay quarters. That way, we'd have a, a good facility for long-term in the admin building. We could move some of the stuff that's in the bay now over to the admin, and it would be a, a good fit for us. So, we're kind of, that's what the, the angle we took. There's just a few pictures of kind of what that might look like. So, the first floor on the admin, we would move the battalion chief's quarters to that side of the building, we'd move the EMS, decon, we'd get the bunker gear out of the bay, get those in a, in a room, get a nice, a, a meeting room that we conceivably use, either as a secondary or maybe even a, a primary ECC, if it's big enough, we could, we could use that for that purpose. New tower, get the fitness room, get that out of the, out of the bay, we've, we've heard about that. So, this would do a lot of good things initially with this part of the building. And that's just on the first floor. So, the first floor would be, you know, a, a welcome area, entry, a secured, we'd have vestibules, so we could have security in the building, and then essentially have training and some of the other offices in that first floor. The second floor would be, considered the admin section, so the chief's office and administrative help would be up there, mechanical. So, it wouldn't be quite as much floor space, but it would, you, would use that footprint much more efficiently than it is now. So, we'd get more out of the building to go up. And then, on the east side, we would work on that bay, do some work there. And actually, I hadn't even realized this, but the, where the, the training officers, we'll see a picture of it later, the training officer and battalion chief, their office is in a mezzanine above the bay. That's actually was a fifth bay at one time, and they, they made that into a office space and took away the bay. So, the architect is determined, because we, the initial plans to do a new building were to get a fifth bay in there, so we'd get all the rigs out of there. This would actually open that back up, give us the bay back. And then, we would do an extensive remodel on the crew quarters to bring that up-to-date, the kitchen, the bathroom fixtures. By moving the battalion chief out of there, we actually gained some bunk space, so we can get those extra bunks we're looking for, to get, if we ever did get a, another rig down there, we'd have a place to put people. So, this would, this would give us, on these remodels, you know, a good, you know, seven, 10-plus years of livability in these buildings before we got to the next point of, hey, we may, need to look at this again or get more people in here. So, this would be a, a good fix with that, and especially the admin building. If we built that, that would be a brand-new building, and that would give us a, you know, 20, 30-year building on that side. And then, at some point, we can come and address the crew quarters if, if it came down to that. So, just a few pictures of the, of the, this is Station 42 as it sits now. And so, up there, that's the mezzanine, and that's actually above, right down here is an old, is a apparatus bay, that we've got the bunker gear hanging in. So, we have the, the workout gear right there, you know, it's been tested, we talked about this, the air quality has, has been tested okay, but it's still not an ideal situation to have workout equipment. And this just shows the, the bunker gear in the bay, and again, the training room and battalion chief room above that. So, here's that, that room I'm talking about, and you're looking down into the bay from up there. So, it's, you know, it's small, it's cramped, and we, we would be moving these over into the new admin building section. So, we'd get them out of there, get them in decent office, get them off the, off the roof. This doesn't really show you, it, the kitchen needs to be redone in, in this building, the, dishwasher stove, they're getting to the end of useful life, it's very busy. So, part of the remodel plans had extended this out, bumped it out, and give us a little more room in there, especially if we have more people coming in down the road. What you can't see here is the, like, the flooring is pretty worn. We may be able to address that, coming up with asset replacement, but that's something we'd want to address long-term, is the hardscapes and the ability to clean all these surfaces. Bathroom, so, just to, got to show you that. And this is just, we took this, right now, part of the issue we have is the battalion chief and the lieutenant have their space to do reports, and then the rest of the crew have one room we cram them into to try to get all the reports done. And there's a lot of reports that we have to do these days, so it does get kind of busy in there. Obviously, they're having a lot of fun in there, because I'm taking a picture, but just to point out that it would be nice to get a dedicated room or two for report writing and, and like a, like a library for the firefighters. Okay, so here's where the PowerPoint thing breaks down. So, I just, I just listed a bunch of several things that came back from the reports. I think you have this or can have it, I won't go through it all, but a lot of it, some of it's structural, some of it's electrical, new sprinkler riser, gas heater, range hood, getting the bay fixed up. This is not the extensive list by any means, but it was kind of the stuff that kind of stuck out to me when I was going through there. So, there's, there's a lot to do. Part of the reason I'm glad we actually looked at doing the, the admin demo and build, is as they were going through that, they were identifying things, is, it's one of those things, you get into it, you know, if you give a mouse a cookie kind of thing, it's the next thing, it's the next thing, and the soffits are going out, and this is going out. So, if you get into this, you're going to affect that. And so, that, the admin section is kind of one of those things. It's, it's okay right now, but once you get in and start remodeling, you're going to get into a whole can of worms on those, on that end of things. So, oops, there we go. So, the cost of the remodel, what I've talked about, turns out to be very close to the cost of the initial estimate, just to tear the whole thing down and start over. Part of that just has to do with remodel. I think part of it has to do, when you're doing a remodel, because of what I was just talking about, the unknown factors, you have to build those in, because you don't know what you're going to run into. And you may want to just replace the ceiling, but you might have to replace the roof when you get into it. So, excuse me, they, they account for that, and that is the figure that we have on there for that.
Can I ask a quick question?
You got it.
Before we move on to the next thing. So, the, the cost, as you said, is really close, and I'm wondering, it sounds like you had said it's a seven-to-10-year fix for 20.7. It seems like for 22, we would have a longer-than-seven-to-10-year timeframe before we had to readdress.
Right. Well, I guess, I would say on, on the, on the admin section, the demo rebuild, that would be a 20-to-30-year fix right there, that'd be done. We'd, we'd be set for that. And the other part, we'd, we'd have to look at potentially later. You know, it could go more. I would just, this really more applies to seven-to-10-year, really applies to the next station, 45. Although, because this one is, is pretty extensive, we'd be moving the kitchen around, and we have enough space to get us one more apparatus in there, which would, which would probably, it's hard to tell, you know, population goes up, calls go up, we have to deal with that. But, we'd have, I would say, a good 10 years before it probably tapped out again, like we're at now with, with space, we're just a space issue.
Have, have we looked into potentially, I don't know if this would work out, but this is kind of right downtown, and it seems like it's a valuable piece of property. Have we looked at alternatives for selling this property and buying something else with more space elsewhere that might be cheaper? Or is that?
We, we kind of looked at it. It's, it's not ideal to have your fire station in downtown, you'd like it to be out a little bit and respond into downtown, right?
Right.
As the, as the population grows. But, there's really, we couldn't find anything close enough that would really make sense, that's, that's doable. I'd heard at one point that the post office might be moving, and I was jumping on that, and the postmaster said, "No, we want to stay there." So, that was my first, that was an awesome one. But, no, um...
That's interesting, because I talked to a developer the other day, who said that he was looking at that property, so.
Really? That's funny.
Yeah.
Okay. But, yeah, we did, we did kind of look at that. We haven't gone too far, because we, just because of the cost of property downtown, to get something that, that's a pretty good, pretty good-sized property, and it does us well for what we, for a downtown property, it's not bad. But, we could, we could look around and see if there's something that, that might work, that's just a little bit further out. But, we've got a real good response, especially when we're doing a lot of responses south of the river there, to Riverside, that's, it's probably 10% of our calls. We, we might have 600, 700 calls just on that strip of highway right there with all the retirement centers and whatnot.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I was thinking, is the land would be cheaper on that side of the river. Not that I want you in my neighborhood, because you're kind of noisy, but, just a thought.
Yeah. It's, it's an option, we could, we could certainly look at that. Yeah.
So, the difference between the 20.7 and the 22, if you were to tear that down and start fresh, that would actually have the two stories that you were showing, every, both sides would have the two stories, it'd give you the fifth bay for the 22 versus the 20.7, and it's all new?
Yeah, that's what the costs are. And I'm, the cost shocked me as well, but I'm, what I did like about the costing, I think that our, the Robinson Company that did the cost estimates, they're pretty conservative on their cost estimating. So, I, I feel comfortable that if that number, it would be doable to do what we want to do with that number. Because they, they, they projected into the, you know, 2020, when we might start this thing, so they've got escalators in there, it's, you know, 10% escalator. So, I think the numbers are accurate. But, it's just, it's the whole remodeling thing, it's, it's just, it's cheaper to come in, tear it down, just start over fresh on a lot of the stuff. And we, and, and the other, the bonus for that with a new station, is we could reconfigure it and get much more efficient use out of that property, and actually maybe gain a little footprint in there for more parking or a training problem, because we'd go up two stories and the whole thing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Station 45. So, this is the one just off the highway up here, and I just drew in real quick, we're looking at it, north is up, and so, what part of this thing, we're looking at bumping out where there's, there's a room, a meeting room right now?
I'm totally sorry, but Councilor Raggedy had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On Station 42.
No, I was, I was just looking at Station 42, and, you know, I think I agree with some of the other councilmembers that are saying, you know, it, it may be worth our while to spend the extra $1.3 million and have something that's going to last 30 years down the road compared to something we're going to have to remodel in 10. And then, I, I liked what you did in the demo and the remodel for the admin section of it now, but I'd, I'd also like for us to think about having these fire stations to where the public has access and they can walk in, and there's maybe a meeting room off to the left or right in front that they can use, and we have restrooms, and, you know, make it a little bit more accessible to some of the public. And I didn't see any of that in there, so food for thought.
Okay. I think there is, I would, I was hopeful in that training room, there's a facility in, oh, no, it was? Well, these drawings are just a quick, because we're kind of in a time crunch to get this done, so the architect was doing us a, a solid by going through and getting these out, just ideas. We, we have lots of room for refinement, and one of the, I just thought about, the costs in the remodel versus new, there is a lot of stuff in that remodel that you would get in the new building. Would it be all-new mechanical, all-new heating, a lot of electrical, fire systems? So, there's a bunch of stuff they just have to bring up that's just old and worn out, up that's just old and worn out, that you would do in a new building anyway, and they'd be doing in that remodel. So that's, that's part of the reason why that's so expensive, is you get a lot of infrastructure things that aren't necessarily walls, it's other stuff in the building. Okay, so Station 45, so there's two proposed, again, this one, this is just, just a remodel, adding a little bit to the, the north end of the station where there's a meeting room, if you've been up there before, and then bumping one of the bays out to accommodate the ladder truck. The ladder truck we have here at 42 is if, if we ever came down to getting two trucks or want to move it, we can't park it in there, it's too small. So we'd have to bump out that bay a little bit to actually get the ladder in there. So that was, you know, while we're doing this, you know, if it's long-term, if we're taking seven, 10-plus years down the road, we want to kind of prepare for that. So we, we added that into the mix as well. And so this one kind of looks like that. And this is the station that had the semi-private dorms, the bunks, we'll look at those in a minute. And this, this enables us, gives us five individual dorms, adds a restroom, but they only have two restrooms in there right now, so it adds a restroom. We're able to, to move the fitness room inside, get a little conference room, get some stuff in the bay. There's a nice thing, we get the washer and dryer that's in the bay right now. We get that kind of in a secured area. There's a walk-off area, so you don't have, you're not walking right into the station from the bay, and you'll see a picture of that. So we're trying to keep that, the cross-contamination away, kind of do a hot-warm zone as best we can. The, the one thing here that is a downer, that I don't like, is because of the footprint and trying to keep to this thing tight and budget, we'd essentially lose most of our public space. We'd have a dedicated lobby, we'd have a small, where's that? Kind of a small conference room in there, but we really wouldn't have a huge public space in there. So we could have, you know, little meetings, but not like it is now. The room is a little bit bigger. So again, this is same, same idea. We've got the workout room in there, and washer and dryer is back there right off the bay. Bunker gear, and I, I had to put this picture in there. Just make sure you know what bunker gear is. We've got a firefighter in his bunker gear, right? So that's what we're worried about, is keeping this stuff out of the sunlight as much as possible. And, and there's also, even though we wash gear now, we have extractors that can wash this, and we keep it clean. It used to be the badge of honor, you'd have your smelly, stinky gear. Well, it's, it's really bad stuff. So we keep it clean, we have two sets. So we're always trying to keep it good. But even at that, they still do off-gas. There's still stuff on those things that come off. So having them, getting them out in their own room with a fan to vent them off is a good idea. So we're trying to get to, trying to get to that if we can. Here's, here's what I'm talking about, this station. This is a small station, built really for maybe three, it can do five. So the kitchen area is teeny-tiny, and you, that door, the apparatus, you step right into the apparatus bay from the kitchen. So there's no buffer, there's no, you're right in there, right? So if there's somebody running an engine in there, you get the stuff coming in. The dining room area is right, that chair, and then your day room is right, right next to it. So the plans have it to open that up, knock out some walls, just make it a little more livable, especially if we had five people there, because this would be the station we'd want to put the next aid car, the next group of people, two, two folks, we'd tap out, we'd be right to the limit of five, but it would be a little more comfortable. And I was telling somebody today, you know, if we did, if this came down to just, well, all we could do is remodel this station, we could remodel it like we're talking about, I would be able to sleep at night, because our folks would be safer than they are now, they'd have better accommodations, they would be much better off than they are currently. Bathroom. So here's the dorm room I'm talking about. So if you're standing on one end, you look down the hall, you've got a bed, and then you've got like a partition for a cubicle, and then another bed, another bed, and then the far end is another bed. So it's, it's just, it's not up to standards. We're kind of going away from the open dorm areas. You get more women in the fire service, it's nice to have individual rooms. And so this would allow us to do that, to put doors on there. This is a, it's almost embarrassing. This is a, this is a problem, we get written up, we write ourselves up for this just about every year for the fire inspection, because we're storing stuff in this darn room upstairs. We don't have any storage. And it's a, this, this building is not sprinkled yet, so part of the remodel would be, have to bring it up to code and sprinkler it, which would take care of part of the problem. But this, it's a mechanical room, it takes up a lot of space in the station, which just lends itself to be storage, which we really shouldn't be doing. So that's one of the things we could address with this as well. And again, this is kind of the same list. A lot of these things are similar to Station 42. But the mechanical is just old and worn out, and we'd have to replace a lot of electrical systems, the lighting's not very good. We've got to secure some of the walls down for sheer strength, sprinkler system, goes on. And then, so the cost on this one, though, you might like a little better. It went from 14.5 to $6 million on this remodel bid. And that's, did you send them the options? Okay, you'll get the options after that. We, we looked at this, there was three different options. One was no bump outs at all, just keep the station to the same footprint. It's really not a very good option. The second one was to put the addition on there, the proposed addition, but not the bay, and the third was the bay, you know, the whole thing. So that's the top dollar amount, is $6 million. And this would, again, it's not, it's not the greatest, because if I had my choice, I'd tear it down. This is another one, we cannot find land around there. It's all wetland or commercial, it's really expensive to get in that area. So if we're stuck with this property, it's very small, but we would go up two stories and get a little more efficiency out of the building. But for the remodel, we wouldn't be doing that. We would just be bringing it up, getting sprinklers, upgrading electrical, moving walls around, just to give us a little more breathing space for, I don't know, seven, 10, maybe 12 years, until that station, the population now grew the station. Oh, I meant, that's it. Any questions? I know there's a lot of stuff in there, yeah.
I'm just thinking out loud here, so apologizing for that. I'm sitting here thinking, because I live here in downtown Bothell, and I love the fire station here. I mean, that was the selling point when we bought the house, was, oh, good, the boys can watch the fire tricks go in and out. So I love the fire, fire station noise. That said, I'm thinking about logistics, especially for 42, and I guess on some level, this also applies to other fire stations that we remodel, is if you remodel, where do the firefighters go during that time? And on one level, I'm thinking, well, if you were to rebuild, then that kind of opens you up to, you know, just build brand-new. That kind of opens up an option of, well, we'll build our new firehouse over here, keep our firefighters where they are now, and then, you know. That would open it up as an option, but it gets me back to my first thought of, when you're remodeling or building from scratch, where do, what happens to our firefighters while that's happening?
Part of that's built into the costing factor, they build that in. So there's several ways to do that. One, like for Station 42, if we did the administration building, we would come down and visit Jennifer for about a year, the admin, and would hang out at City Hall. And that would be pretty straightforward, we'd just have to find places to hide at City Hall, you know, to get us in there. But that's doable. Firefighters, we would do, likely get like a trailer, a double-wide, or some kind of a temporary building and houseman. It's not the greatest, but the fact that they're getting a new and improved building generally smoothes that over a little bit for the time they're in there. And same for Station 42. That one would be tricky, because it's such a small property. We'd have to, we have to look at that. But they, they do figure that in, a cost factor for that. We have, so we have a couple of options on that.
So, so the costs, that portion of a model or rebuild was figured into the numbers?
Yes. We tried to, we tried to put everything in there. They have what's called soft costs, which is like the architect's fees and stuff, it's just not part of the hard bill itself. Everything that goes in there, furnishings, all kinds of stuff like that is built into the factor. So it should take care of everything.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess, I'm just kind of thinking about, do most cities our size have three stations like this, or do some of them kind of have a major station? I'm just kind of trying to wonder in my mind, if we have three pieces of property, and we were able to, like, build a good, one great station, wouldn't that be an option as well?
It would. The only, the issue we have is, is travel time, response time. That's why we have kind of the stations around, is to try to spread that out. We could put them on one station. Big, inner cities do that, because it's just cheaper to get them there. But, and they don't have to go as far, right? But we're, we're kind of north-south, and so we've got a ways to go to get to our north and south boundaries. And if we had all in the middle, even in the middle, the south and north end, it'd be really poorly served. We just couldn't get there. And traffic patterns are building to the point where it's, it's much, much better to have them where they're at now, split up a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Pushed me off there. Could you go back to the picture of 45?
Yeah.
So if we do this remodel, how long do you think, I think you mentioned seven-to-10 years or something like that, timeframe? If Canyon Park is our, we're making that a regional growth area, it's going to be one of the fastest-growing areas, maybe potentially bigger buildings and stuff like that, is that station going to be adequate for the future?
Probably not. Because right now, if we did this, it'll only give us five dorms, which would, which would give us a dedicated engine and a dedicated aid car, which is kind of where we're at. And I was hoping for, you know, seven to 10. But if that does grow like that, and we need another apparatus up there, we'd be out of room already.
Is there, would, is that land big enough to do a larger station?
You know, I'd have to look at the, the print. I think we had seven, I want to say seven beds in the, in the, in the tear-down and rebuild. We could probably add more, we could probably get eight in there. But the problem is with this, although I just found out the other day, you can't see it, but in the, in the back, where the, back here, there is a, it's, it's indent, there's a, there's a small stream that goes by there. And we thought we were verboten to build back there. We thought we were too close to the stream, but we just found out that we, we potentially could bump the back of the station out a little bit, just this part, to fill in the station, because it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of bumped out. And that would give us enough room to, we wouldn't have to go out in the front of the station, we could back everything up and give a little more room, and that might give us enough room to mess around and get another dorm or two in there by doing that.
But again, that's on a remodel.
That's a remodel, yeah. And also on a rebuild, we, we'd probably use the same property, but use, go up a story, give us, give us much more versatility in what we have there.
And you could get more apparatus, potentially?
Um, yes. We'd definitely get bigger bays, we could get bigger, all rigs in there, but we, it was a three-bay station. So that would be tapped out. But that would give us, we could have a first-out engine, a first-out truck, and an aid car with three bays in there. But then we'd be full, we'd be on the edge, you know, of that again. I don't think we can get four bays in that, on that property.
Okay. Is there, and if I remember where the parking lot is on the west side of that, there's additional parking beyond the parking for the station, right?
Well, yeah. Juno has that, and they are, they would love to buy our property right now and make it into parking. They're, they're expanding. And so I doubt they'd be interested in us coming over there. We could talk to them. Well, I haven't, I haven't approached them yet. We, we tried to talk to somebody, we didn't really get anywhere initially. We were just doing this real quick to kind of see what the interest was. So I would love to do that. That would help a lot.
To be able to expand.
Yeah, if we could expand a little bit, you know, just even 20, 30 feet into that, get some more parking, then it would really help the building out.
Okay. One of the downsides, I guess, that I saw when you showed that was, I remember actually using that community room up there, that little conference room that's in front, so losing that would, I don't think that would be great. But what, is there another station up by the DNR property?
Oh, that's Station 44.
Okay. Is that, is that station, or is that land big enough to do something on?
That's actually a little bigger than this. It's kind of a funky frontage, the, the front of the station that faces the roads, skinnier in the back, but it's big enough to build a station that would, that would accommodate us longer. But the problem is, and it's not a problem, it's, it's probably the slowest station, so we don't get as many calls from that station. But most of our calls are on that corridor, that Bothell Highway, right? They're, they're mostly on that corridor, so anything we have near there is better. So Station 45 is in a great spot, because it's right there, 42 isn't too bad, and 44 is okay, but you have to come down the hill.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Did you, or the architect, look into what it would cost to do two stories?
Yes. On the, on the rebuild, they're all two stories.
This, I thought this was just bumping out in the front.
On the rebuild, on the, oh, I'm sorry, the remodel, no. The remodel is just a one-story, just keep it the one-story, but just bump it out.
I guess I was thinking similar to Station 42, where you leave the bays, or maybe add that little bump for the ladder truck, but then what would it cost to go up two stories on the, the other section?
Well, unfortunately, I got a feeling if you did that, you're, you're structural, you're taking the roof off, you're going to start getting in the Station 42 where you're going to be close to the original price of tearing it down to do that. This is, this is a pretty extensive remodel as it is, because they're going to, they have to do the, it'll probably be down in the studs, just to move walls around, there's bearing walls, and then, and then you get the sprinkler system in and all the, all the other systems in. It would be pretty bare bones, but we wouldn't be taking the roof off.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at, at seven-to-10 years is, is an extremely temporary solution.
Yeah, and, and not so much for the livability.
I mean, would we even pay off the bonds in seven to 10 years?
Yeah. Well, that's another thing, too. I don't think, I'll be honest, I didn't get that number from the architect, I just was just kind of thinking down the road, you know, as far as building out and being able to, for the future, we want to expand these stations where we can, we can expand. And for this one, we would be building it essentially for now, or the...
Well, I guess that's my point, that you're not going to get more acreage.
No.
And so going up, I mean, I know it would cost more, but it would be odd to, to pay for a bond that you don't even pay off, and then before you've paid it off, you have to go out for another solution. Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, but.
See you, manager.
So a couple of things. Keep in mind that we put this information together very, very quickly. It's just to give you a sense of what the capital costs are. And so there's a lot of questions that you may have that we don't have answers to. I mean, this was literally, this is a year's worth of work to get into the detail that you're interested in hearing, that we did in six weeks or so. So great questions, but this is, this is really just to give you a sense of what we think our needs are. So I just want to make sure that you understand that, that this isn't, we're not ramped up to talk about the actual details of the fire stations. Just trying to give you some conceptual ideas of what, what our needs are. And you asked us at the price tag, that was sort of some sticker shock. So the ask was, come back and tell us what some remodels, is there a way to reduce this, this $73 million? And that's what we've done, is we've said, okay, this is, the remodel on 42 is obviously almost the same price as a raise and rebuild, so you're coming to the conclusion that we've come to. This is an option for 45. It's not right or wrong, we're just showing you what a potential remodel could cost. And 44, we don't own. And naturally, the challenge with 44 is, we just can't go in and remodel someone else's building. And, and so that's why we didn't put a remodel cost there, because it's not feasible for us to do that. If we're going to rebuild, if we're going to take ownership of 45, of 44, we need to find land and build 44, and relinquish basically 44 to snow 10.
That's what I was going to say. So as a council, we did, oh, you've been waiting. I'm sorry, Councilor Ragnie.
I, I didn't see, now, are extractors going to be in all the stations?
No. We, right now, we're going to go extractors with 42 and 44, and not put one in 45. We're right now, because of space, mostly. And we don't, we don't use them enough really to, I don't think at this point, to warrant having them in all stations.
Okay. And then, and then I didn't see a drive-through bay in any of them. And, and it seems like you're talking about putting the truck up here. My guess would be, if you're going to put the truck up here, within a short period of time, the battalion chief would be up here, too, to give you more access into 42s. So, I mean, we're, we're only talking, what, six years down the road?
Well, I think the, we haven't completed again, because it's been quick. I haven't completely thought this through. If we did bring a, a truck up here, it wouldn't be the truck, it might be a backup or another truck. We would not be moving the battalion chief to 45s. That would probably, that would likely stay downtown where it is now. The drive-through bays, 42, definitely drive-through bays. The rebuild we had for 44 is drive-through bays. This one, we just can't do it.
Right.
The property is just so small. We can't, state, the DOT has a hissy fit, if you, if you come out onto the highway. So we can't come, we can't come drive right on the highway, so we have to come off the side street. And obviously, we're kind of landlocked in there. We can't, can't get around the station to, to put a drive-through in there.
And then I, if we have time, and I know that we're, time isn't something that we have the luxury of, I would love to see what it would cost us to, to rip the roof off and go up.
I can certainly ask the, the architect and the estimator if, if there's a formula for that, you know, just to say, hey, you know, just go straight up, we just, you know, raise it up, give us some square footage, you know, not even worry about interior spaces. Because I think most of that would be addressed already with what we're doing with mechanical and electrical and whatnot. Wouldn't be that much more to go up.
So Chief, the, the original price tag was 72 million. And I didn't, maybe you brought this up already, but, well, let me just take a step back. In your professional opinion, do you think we should move... In your professional opinion, do you think we should move forward with trying to tear this down and rebuild it now? Or is your recommendation to tear down 42 and rebuild it and remodel this?
If, my perfect world would be to tear it down, build it again. I think we'd be better off and set ourselves up for the future, for the long range future. If it's, if it's a matter of, you know, what can we do right now with, with the way the voters are? If we're really antsy about that, we need to get the levy passed, we're trying to do a bond at the same time. We're just trying to get something done, then this would work. We could live with that. Station 42, it looks like, I think it's, kind of makes sense just to tear that one down. Because I don't, I can't see doing what, a remodel on that for the, how close it is to the other one. So the both of them together, I can't remember, it's 20, 28 million or something at this point.
For the remodel here?
For the remodel. So it'd be about 35, 36 for both stations to get torn down and built.
And that's, that's, that's the preference, though. I mean, that would really give us some longevity in the investment.
It would, it would build for the future, we'd have room for growth. So if we did, as Canyon Park builds, if we decide, you know, the population drives the call volume and in fact just, that station goes crazy, we'd have the ability to put a, a third rig in there at some point in the life of this building. Whereas if we did the remodel, we wouldn't, we'd really be kind of patchwork again.
Yeah, see, I'm not real excited about doing patchwork. I think it's really important that we just, we go out to the public and tell them exactly what we think we need for how long we're going to be paying on these bonds and just be frank with them. And if they vote no, they vote no, and then we'll figure it out. But, um, okay, thank you, that's what I needed to know. Councilmember McColl.
Thank you. So let me go back again to the need for three stations. So say we had just two stations and did rebuilds on the two.
We would definitely suffer on responses to over 228th on the backside of that hill, because it, it takes a while to get the engine up and over the hill. So right now, we're on top of the hill, we're pretty good either way, and it helps out. We'd have to do some modeling to see what the actual, that might look like. But, well, I hate to paint myself on a corner on that one, but if we had 45s and 42s, we'd have a little hole in the middle, obviously, up the highway there. Could we do it? Sure. We, we have to come back with probably some response time modeling for you to look at, just to, just to see what we think the, how much the times would suffer and if that's something you want to accept.
Well, I think for my concern is we don't own 44 anyway.
Right.
And so maybe it would be better if we had two really good stations that serve the needs for the next 30 years and.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good option. There's an awesome piece of property right next to it, the DNR property. It's about seven acres I would love to get. It's just, just down the thing there, that would, would be phenomenal. I'm just Fire Chief plug here to get the hook. But it would give us a place for training grounds, police could use it for parking their stuff they need to park. It's, it's, it'd be wonderful, but we'd have to buy the property. So that would add a little bit to the station. But, and then it would, it would serve us along the corridor, it's a little closer to the corridor. We're still on, close to the top of the hill. So that's, that's another option. But it, just, you know, getting the cost, just to get us through this thing, because I really want to try to get something going. The two stations would be better than, than, than none. If we do, put all three on there, I'd go with the two at this point.
Could you just kind of speak to the complication about District 10 to that point? That we have some sort of standing agreement with them and their, their, their station is, whatever, you can throw a rocket hit from the DNR station. So could you give Councilmember McColl from the listening public some input on, kind of what would need to happen really for us to build a station instead of Station 44?
Well, it would make our life a lot easier, because we would own the property. Right now, that, that's a United States Army property. Excuse me, that FEMA owns. There is a perpetual lease, you know, like a 100-year lease or as long as you, as the property is used for a fire station, they can use it there. So theoretically, we probably could tear it down and build another station. But District 10 does own the building, not the property, but the building. So we'd have to work through that to see if they'd be willing to, to give it to us or how that works out. We just, because it's, that's so complicated and we're not really, haven't gone down that road yet, that's why I was putting on that station off, just because of the timeliness of this whole thing. But yeah, and if we're talking about building a station and not having a place to go, that'd be an ideal case if we, we built it on the DNR land. We could stay on that station until we got the other one built and then move over. You're done, but.
So I guess my question is, purchasing the DNR land, can you speak to that a little bit? I mean, does that mean you're going to pay it full value? Do we have an advantage because it's already owned?
Honestly, I don't know. We, we're getting a real estate person, is that right, on board?
Do you mean I'm hiring a broker?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we started this before we really had a broker going. So I, and, and I didn't really want to get into, you know, asking how much are you selling it for, kind of land values. I would, I would think they'd work with us. My, I've heard, I've understood that that property's been for sale for a while, because it is kind of long and narrow, it's, it's not a real desirable commercial property. So they may be willing to sell, not top dollar. I don't know, I honestly don't know. And we just didn't get that far, because I'm just trying to keep the cost down. And then one more thing I didn't want to throw out.
So I'm going to explore this further. So you were saying that this property is next to Juno that wants to expand. So I would be interested in knowing what the appraised value of this land is versus DNR. Because maybe if we sold this and built on DNR, it would make sense and.
Well, then there, we'd have to look at response times, because then our response times north would really suffer. And then in that, that highway is bad right now. Getting up and down there on rush hour is awful. And if we had a longer response just to get to the highway, it'd really slow us down going up there. Now, we, we've looked at this a little bit, but our partners around the areas, District 7 has a Station 73, it's just due east of Station 45. It's very slow, but it's right on our growth boundary border. So at some point, we're going to be on that station. That station's going to be across the street from the city of Bothell. And then Snow 7 also has a station north, but it's, it's too far north to really pick up the slack if 45 wasn't there. They couldn't get down a timely response to where that station serves right now.
She didn't mean it. Councilmember Agnew.
I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that you looked at response times and found that our stations are basically where they need to be for right now, for the response times. And if I'm not mistaken, we get a lot of mutual aid, but we also give a lot. And especially at 44s, because they go down in North Shore a lot, don't they?
A fair amount. We actually probably get, we really do get more North Shore response, just because of where the stations line up. But they, they do go down there, they occasionally go and we, 44 and 45 venture into Snow 1 or Snow 7 occasionally. Part of that's just due to the dispatching issues between the counties. But as they get better at that, we'll probably be doing more of that.
Well, we'll get into response times later.
City Manager.
I wanted to clarify the Deputy Mayor's question. So again, we're on a really tight timeframe. And so if, if truly, if the council has an interest in, in looking at the, much more complexity than what we've presented now, we can't get this done by June. And so we're, we're again, trying to give you a current need based on the amount of time that we've been given. You asked us to, to look at this in, in late 2017 was your direction to begin work on this. We began work on this right away in early 2018. This is what we've been able to put together. And, and to get it on the November ballot, you have to make a decision by the end of June. And so if, if we've come up short in information for you, I apologize. But we've done the best we can with the amount of time and resources that we've been given. And so if, if those kinds of complex things, looking at the DNR property and, and all these sort of other, then I, I need some direction, whether that's really important to you. And then I need to be able to tell you whether I can achieve that for your June, your June decision or not.
It sounded like mine was not a good suggestion based on response times. So rest assured, that's not going forward.
James, or Councilmember McNeil, sorry.
I would actually like to say that I, I'm, I like this process. I think it opens the door for us to be able to ask questions. So I think you guys are doing a fabulous job. For me, I think it, it makes me think long-term and make sure that we're not just doing something and putting a Band-Aid on something that we're going to have to go back out to the public again for in five, 10 years. So I think this process is great. And, and by no means do I think that you guys let us down. I think you're doing a fabulous job, so.
Councilmember Resarts.
Just a quick question, because I, because I have Scotch blood and I have a frugal side to me. I, I look at the idea of remodeling and think this, this is going to come with a high threshold of, of what's acceptable in a remodel, what the materials are used and that sort of thing. So my question is, remodel or rebuild? In your opinion, 10, five to 10 years from now, given, you know, we've got our stations either remodeled or rebuilt, are we going to be sitting back here saying we need another fire station like on the DNR property? To accommodate all the growth demands? Because my, looking at, my gut is saying, we're going to need a new fire station 10 years down the road. We're going to need, regardless of how big and fancy these are, to serve the needs of the community, we're probably going to need a new fire station, a third. That's got, that can handle the capacity.
Yeah, a lot of that really is going to be, well, the population and the travel times is, is the density gets and the traffic congestion, that's going to probably drive it, you know, maybe more than the call volume, because we're going to get slower and slower, just be able to get places. And that, that may come into play. But as we do more of this regionalization, just working with our partners, even though we have auto aid, it's becoming less of an issue. We just signed the, the King County Auto Aid Agreement. So essentially, we have open borders in all of the counties. Seattle's, you know, playing nice now. So that's helping things out a lot. And, and people are being very good with their neighbors. So that's, that's really going to push this thing way to the future. So we're, it is, maybe, I can't say it won't be, but it's going to be way down the road at this point.
Councilmember McColl, did you have?
So I, I guess I'm struggling a little bit, because we're working on a short timeframe. And I think this is a pretty big issue. I'm looking around here at City Hall, I'm looking at the fire station and I'm thinking about, I mean, the police station, and I'm thinking about our fire stations. If we do these remodels, I think my next step would say, you know what? In the next so many years, we need to look at the DNR, we need to think of selling our property. We shouldn't be in a position where we can't do what we need to do because of a short timeframe. That's frustrating for me.
I completely agree. And I would, I would just, I guess, add, you know, the Fire Chief thing is, you know, the not addressing 44 and the remodel thing was strictly a monetary thing. Because that one really needs to come down. It's just, it's, it doesn't make any sense to try to remodel that one. So I, I wouldn't want to live, let it go forever. My, my desire would be, you know, if we get this bond, we're able to get two stations done and maybe come back in 10 years or whatever the, whatever the, the comfort level is to address Station 44. Because it needs, it needs to be addressed at some point. It just maybe, maybe not now is the time, that, you know, if we add all three of them together, it's just so expensive.
So just to respond to City Manager, I think that you're, are you still looking for direction from us? Because I, I'd like to chime in on that and just say that I'm comfortable with trying to move this forward for the fall ballot. And so I understand that we don't have a lot of time to sit there, we don't have a lot of time to research a bunch of different stuff at this point. I think those two fire stations that we're talking about, not talking about 44, but the other two, Station 45 and 42, and I support going for the full remodel of both, or rebuilt, sorry, of both. That's where I, that's where I stand. Councilmember Agnew.
I agree. I think 42 and 45 should be remodeled, or not remodeled, but rebuilt. And I'm sure the boys and girls will be happy to be in their double wide trailer. Some of them even have jacuzzis, trust me. I was in one for a few years. I, I agree with Councilmember McCollum in our concerns for growth and putting in another fire station. I, I totally agree with not putting a whole lot of money into, into 44s, because we don't own it. And, and two, it's, I think it was built in 68? I don't think anybody here has anything that was built in 68, other than me, probably. So, and I think if we, we build another fire station in the future, it's probably going to be south. It's not going to be north, it's going to be south to the area. But, you know, that's just food for thought for 10, 20 years down the road, maybe. But, but I agree. I mean, and the chief brought it up. He said, you know, if I'm going to look and build a fire station, I want to be able to put that station in and people are going to be there for 30 years, you know? And, and the firefighters are going to change in 30 years. And, and, you know, are there going to be more personnel in each station? Probably. So we have to, we have to address it and we have to make them to where the public has access to them. You know, the old chief, he said he wanted to build stations and every, every satellite station he built, he wanted to have a little park right there so kids could come and play and look at the fire station and come in and use the bathrooms if they needed to use the bathrooms, have a drink of water. You know, that's a great idea if we, we have funding for, but I don't know if we have that. But I totally agree with the mayor on this.
Deputy.
So I'll weigh in. I, I agree. I, it doesn't make sense to me to go out for bonds that are only seven to 10-year solutions. Our job is to make the best decision that we can make and suggestion to the public. We can't anticipate what they're going to do. We can only give them our best effort as far as what we think is the responsible thing to do. And, and I think rebuilding is the more responsible thing to do and the public can decide.
Councilmember McNeil.
I'm also supportive of rebuilding both 42 and 45. I think we should be making sure during that process, we're looking at future growth, where our growth areas are going to be and making sure that those stations can handle the growth that we're going to be taking on. But I, I'm all in support of what Councilmember Agnew said again about community rooms and things like that. I think that'll, that'll help foster the move, as we try to go out and do something, so.
Councilmember Olson.
I think I agree with everyone so far. Rebuilding 42 and 45 seems to make the most sense with the timeframes that we're talking about for the, with the remodels and really the temporary nature of those and the, just the cost of these. So I, I think I'm in agree, agreement with everyone so far with rebuilding 42 and 45.
So I think that's, that's the majority, but would, would anybody else like to chime in? Councilmember McColl.
So I agree on rebuilding 45, 42. I am concerned about 45 and I would prefer to know what would it cost us to build a second floor and actually do the remodel instead of totally rebuilding that? And the reason I say that is that piece of property is very small. And I don't know if it's a really good thing to totally rebuild there. So I guess my question would be, you know, what, what option would we have? Rebuild or else do the second floor? And how does that really come out cost-wise?
Well, because of the tight timeline, I could go back to the architect and see if they can give us a reasonably accurate estimate on that. Second story, I'm more than willing to try to do that.
That's what I'm asking. I would look for a majority of the council to support that, because that's a tremendous, we're spending money and, and asking the architect to really jump through loops. So I just want to make sure that, that there's interest by four or more to do that.
To, to just add a second story to?
To go back and ask the architect to do another design, to add the second story, to, to cost that out and do the designs for it, to, to present it to you.
Okay. Be a whole, I would imagine it'd be like, a lot like $14 million, based on the other one, but. I'm fine with that, though. If you guys want to do that, I have no problem.
It's not us, what do you?
I have no problem supporting that, looking at the second story on Station 45 instead of rebuilding.
So that's two.
Councilmember Resarts.
Could I weigh in? I, Station 42 is a wash on the remodel and rebuild. So rebuild makes sense to me. I'm with Councilmember McCollum on 45. It's a big price jump between 6 million to 14 million. And that property has got some complication, implied complications that make me wonder, is there some tweaking that, you know, are we, are we heavily constrained by the property itself in expanding the way that we'd like to expand? Are we going to have to build somewhere else? Are we going to have to build a third station on the, on the DNR, DNR property or a property closer to Canyon Park? We don't have the answers to that question. And there's such a big price difference between the two. My feeling is do a rebuild on 42, do a, a nice remodel on 45, save us some.
is do a rebuild on 42, do a, a nice remodel on 45, save us some pocket change and figure out where we're going to go on the problems with 45. Are we going to invest more on that little postage stamp? Or are we going to find a little bigger chunk of land closer by to build and meet the demands for the Canyon Park area? That's my feeling.
Councilmember Agnew.
I still think that we should remodel 45s. I think once we get into rebuild, excuse me, we should rebuild 45s. And I say that because, you know, once we get into that structure, putting on a second story isn't the easiest thing in the world to do. How structurally sound is, is the base? What's the foundation like? I mean, you know, we may be looking at about the same costs. Again, and if, and if we're looking at very close or similar to, to the cost of rebuilding, it should be a no-brainer. I mean, you're right. It's a small footprint, but it's the footprint that we own. And, and I mean, could we go out and do condemnations on a couple pieces of property? Absolutely. But then the prices are going to go up there too.
Councilmember McNeil.
I'm going to stick with the rebuilding of the 45 because I think it gives us an opportunity to plan 45 for the growth that's going to be in that area. And also knowing construction, cost of construction is going to continue to rise. If we do a remodel now, then we'll probably have to go back out and get more money again in the future. So, I think we should plan appropriately now for that growth. I would be against remodeling because I think it's a waste of money because it's not going to suit the needs for the future.
So, City Manager, just a clarifying question here while we're chiming in. You just were asking us to weigh in on whether we want that option to be brought back in June. It's not that we're just going to either remodel or rebuild, but you're going to bring back both options for 45 and we're going to pick then? Or do you want?
We're trying to make some progress. And so, what I was hearing, I heard at least four members already say you were interested in rebuilding both 45 and 42.
Correct.
And then Councilmember McCullough asked for additional information to look at a remodel that was maybe larger and went to a second story. So, my question was, I already had a majority of the council interested in, in raising and rebuilding the two stations. Did you want to change your direction and have us put that work into looking at, at 45 and looking at going to a second story? And how could we maximize in a remodel? Because what I, what I heard was already for raise and rebuild.
Right.
So, do you want us to put the work in to, to, to look at another option for 45 that's a different remodel that has a second story to it?
But we're not going to be, so I guess I'm confused then. So, I would probably, I would pull my decision back and say I'd rather just level them and rebuild them. I didn't understand that. You were saying that, so when it comes, this comes back one more time when we vote on it, whether it's going to be on the ballot or not. And that package is going to be either a second story, big, you know, remodel, or it's going to be a level and rebuild for 45?
Well, no. What, what we're trying to do is, is, is move forward so we can start to put that language together. Because we have to start preparing the ballot measure for your decision in June. And so, if we can come back again and, and show you those additional options, but we were hoping to make some progress on, yes, this is what we want for the capital and that we can start to put those numbers together and start to put that bond measure together. If you want us to come back one more time and show you what the costs are to do a, a more extensive remodel on 45, that takes our time. We have to hire the architect again. He has to do the designs and do the costing. And then we would bring that back to you. Are you interested in that or not? And that's what I was unclear on.
Okay. I guess I'm not really clear either. Councilmember McCall.
Let me, let me ask the question here. If you were going to rebuild on 45, would you do a second story?
I, I believe it's a second story, yes.
So, that's the second story that I, I want is the.
Yes, it's in the rebuild for sure.
Okay. Well.
All right. I'm going back to my original statement that I want 42 and 45 to come back as a rebuild. Councilmember McCall's with me. Like, deputy mayor?
So, I, I think that's decided. But I was the one who brought up the second story. So, I thought I should weigh in. I think after looking at the, the cost differential between on 42, it doesn't, it's obvious that it's going to come in close. And furthermore, I don't know that the siding of that building is the most, 45 is the most efficient. And so, to me, it makes sense, as Councilmember McNeil said, to, to redesign it, looking for the future where there might be other opportunities to expand as we need to.
Let's talk about the police department. Are we ready to do that? All right. Should we take a break first? Or do we, does it, you want to take an early break? Okay. Let's take a break. We'll come back at 7:45.